Good evening. The July 11, 2017 regular board meeting of the Men Are Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 331, 3.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Ms. Jisling.
Present. I would like to welcome everyone to the July 11, 2017 regular board meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their reviewing consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name, and comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable, Channel 96.96 in Mentor and Channel 96.22 in Men Are on the Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on your YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. We begin with the superintendent's report and recommendations.
And we have approval of the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm looking. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the June 13, 2017 regular meeting and June 29, 2017 special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes. A hearing of the public on agenda items. Did anyone wish to speak? Now, Mr. Porter, the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of consent agenda items VA 1 through VA 9.
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, this evening, we have the first reading of the revised organizational chart for administrators. As this is a first reading, a vote is not necessary.
Any discussion?
At this time, from our addendum, Madam President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of agenda item C1, the hiring of Suzanne Chin as supervisor of special education.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
I'm going to abstain.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
And Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of agenda item C2 related to the certified staff and C3 through C6, all related to the human resource matters. This includes the resignation of Zachary Martin under C3 and the resignation of Anthony Randa for the supplemental position of an activity club advisor at Ridge as he resigned from that position. Both of these changes are noted in the agenda addendum.
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Thank you. I am recommending approval of agenda item D related to administrative staff.
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
And Mr. Wilson.
Yes, under the Board of Education report and recommendations, for the second year now, our career technical program has purchased a home as a learning lab for our students and with a complete remodel and then for resale, which will fund the purchase of a house for the third year. Ohio Revised Code requires that we conduct a public auction with 30-day notification to sell the property, and if we're not successful with that, then we can proceed with private sale. We're asking the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing me to conduct a public auction after proper notice.
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes. And the house is extraordinary. The students and their instructors did such a wonderful job. It's something that really makes a beautiful improvement to that home, and I'm sure whoever buys it will enjoy living here. Oh, Mr. Tuttle, the legislative report, please.
I distributed a very brief legislative report there for you to read at your leisure. Our next board meeting, I'll have more information, and I'll go over that as well. But at this time, I'd like to ask Dan to provide an update on a pending legal action. Not our legal action, but ECOt regarding ECOt. Thank you, Dan.
Yes, and before I get into that, I'd like to make one additional comment. As you may have read, Governor Kasich used his authority and issued 141 line item vetoes to the state budget. One of those affected the tangible personal property reimbursement program that we still receive funding through. Fortunately, I just got a first draft of a new simulation from Legislative Budget Commission this afternoon. The impact is not greater upon us than was in the budget bill presented to the governor. Having said that, it's still not good news that the new two-year state budget will reduce our state subsidies, including the tangible personal property reimbursement, by $7,784,74. We had anticipated a more modest reduction in our five-year forecast of $3,926,095. So our challenge now is, over the next two years, we'll have an additional revenue reduction beyond what we anticipated of $3,152,379. So we are continuing to work through the impact of that as we prepare the budget, certainly the new five-year forecast, being mindful of the Board of Education's guidance and seeking balancing of the 2020-21 budget. So I'll be working with the superintendent very closely, both with this budget development and a new forecast. On to your request, the what's known as ECOt, Electronic Classroom of Tomorrow, one of the very early charter schools in our state, was found to take credit for enrolled students that weren't provided enough seat hours of instruction in 2015, 2016. The Ohio Department of Education determined that they needed to refund approximately $60 million to the department. There have been three legal challenges to that, all which have not been successful by ECOt. They currently have two pieces of challenges resting before the Ohio Supreme Court. Speculation is that the Supreme Court may not take up the matter, but simply refer it back to the lower courts that have already ruled. The important piece to this is, as I shared with Tom, I'm beginning to read in our news clips that there may not be statutory authority for the Ohio Department of Education to, once they've recovered this $60 million, to return it to the school districts that were deducted the monies originally. In our case, in 2015, 2016, $294,843 was deducted for students. Some amount of that would be involved in this refund of the $60 million. And if we look at this year just ended, there was an additional $292,000 deducted for students attending ECOt. And again, we are working, both the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, Bill's professional organization in mind, the Ohio Association of School Business Officials have been very engaged with trying to encourage an administrative way to return those funds to public school districts throughout the state, and if not, to pursue legislative authority for the Department of Education to return that money. So it's, in one sense, a little bit breaking news and something I'm sure is on the radar of the Ohio School Boards Association and the other professional organizations, and we're monitoring it very closely to ensure that monies that were deducted from us inappropriately do get returned to our local community. So that is something you'll be hearing a lot more about in the coming months through the legislative report and other materials you receive.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. The one good piece of news in the legislative report were those changes in graduation requirements being modified to create additional pathways for students in order to earn their diplomas. So that was good to know that the Ohio Department of Education is responsive to the citizens of our state.
Right. You may recall, I reported on that in June prior to the passing of the budget bill. So it did stay in, and that was really positive.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
All righty. Mr. Wilson.
Yes. I'm presenting tonight the June 2017 financial statements. I'd like to make just a couple of comments before I ask for their acceptance. As you know, fiscal year-end was June 30, and we do a high-level analysis for the board at this time. Overall revenues were 5.2% more than we had budgeted. This is primarily attributable to two things. One is significant collection of prior delinquent taxes, along with the sale of tax liens on older delinquent taxes, and higher-than-certified current collections. The county assumes a 4% delinquency rate on new tax bills, and the actual collections were higher than that. That was the vast majority of the positive variance. The other is, we received a true-up for our 2013-2014 Medicaid reimbursement program of approximately $400,000 that was not originally budgeted for that. So very good news on the revenue side. On the expense side, overall, we underspent the budget by 4.3%. The bottom-line total still shows that I'm more conservative than moderate in my budgeting model, but if you recall, last year, I indicated, at the urging of the Finance Committee, I revised the formulas for computing salaries and benefits, and we did see a very positive change there. In fact, salaries came in within 1/10 of 1% of the budgeted amount, so we believe we've done a good job of updating those formulas. And benefits came in 3.6% less than budgeted. Again, all attributable to insurance rate increase of zero in January, where we had budgeted for the industry standard of 8%. Those two things indicate that we have made an improvement in our budgeting models. The most of the positive variance then came from both the zero increase on healthcare benefits, lower-than-budgeted out-of-school district tuition, and lower special education transportation costs, as we were able to move more of our special needs students onto our own school buses and avoid contract services. So we had a very successful year. Our ending cash balance will fund the equivalent of 23 instructional weeks of operations. It's still kind of in a traditional safety zone for us, but as you know, we have declining revenues and increasing expenses, even with some positive budgeted variances. So we'll be diligent in preparing the budget and forecasting going forward. Having said all that, I would ask the board to accept and place on file for audit the June 2017 financial statements.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
I just wanted to comment, Dan. I wanted to thank you for that summary of expense and revenue versus the budget. I thought that was really helpful for the end of the year to see that, and I did also wanted to comment on that savings in the Transportation Department, that 25% decrease, savings of $211,000. That was nice to see.
Especially given the changes in the intangibles taxes.
Yep.
That it offsets some of the impact of that, which is painful.
Thank you.
Indeed. And would you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
And next is recommendation to ratify the investment transactions for the month of June 2017. We distributed those electronically today, and I placed a paper copy at your table. I apologize, but we had a problem with our investment advisors in completing the fiscal year-end statements for us and just received them late yesterday afternoon. Nothing unexpected, as I've been reporting throughout the year. We've begun to lengthen maturities a little bit, particularly recognizing the positive returns in bond markets as we buy government bonds, and also slowly rising interest rate environment, both of which contributed to a significant positive variance in investment income and a lengthening of our weighted maturities. So I apologize, I didn't get them to you sooner, but it is good news in the monthly investment reports, and I ask for your approval and ratification of those.
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Next, it's recommended the Board of Education ratify Exhibit 6-C, which is authorizing the annual funding for eventual turf replacement for both our football stadium as well as the soccer stadium.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve Exhibit 7-D, the appropriation modifications required for us to successfully close the books. They came after the board authorization on June 29.
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Next, I recommend the Board of Education approve Exhibit 7-E, the supplemental appropriations, including one additional supplemental that's enclosed in the addendum that you received this evening for special education preschool.
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
And that completes my items for this evening.
Is there any unfinished business anybody wanted to bring up? Any new business?
Well, I have one item, and I debated if it was new or old business, but you shared with me a letter you received from Men Are on the Lake concerning the Ohio Development Services Agency that approved their community reinvestment area, which is virtually the entire city of Men Are on the Lake, for both commercial and residential properties. It will allow for abatements ranging from 10 to 30 years on certain improvements and new construction. I'm going to request a meeting with the Director of Administration and Finance to help understand the timing of that so that I can calculate the fiscal impact. It won't be a loss of revenues, it'll be a loss of an opportunity for the natural growth in revenue that occur when development occurs and to better understand that. But it has now been approved. You may recall, we communicated a few months ago when City Council first notified us of their pursuit of this back in March, and now it's officially approved at the state level.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson. Anyone wish to address the board, hearing of the public? Mr. Pearson. And we, at this point, are going to adjourn to executive session to go over the Chief Financial Officer's performance review. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes. We don't anticipate.
Well, I'm hoping you have some action.
Oh, we do have to do it. We'll be bad. Poor Mr. Wilson. So we are adjourned to executive session. Return to order. And Mr. Shaw.
I'd make a motion that we provide the financial officer with a 2.12% increase, a $3,000 performance bonus, and continue the practice of providing a 25% bonus of first year revenue from new treasury management agreements. This would apply to this year's agreement with the East Cleveland School District to provide fiscal grant management services. Oh, effective July 1.
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Thank you all very much for the performance review is very meaningful to me and also the adjustment. I continue to be dedicated to providing best quality support to the board, superintendent, and community, so thank you very much.
Mr. Wilson, we're just so grateful for the contributions you make in our ability to respond in a complex financial environment, both what our community needs and what the evolution of education as an institution across the state, and certainly what the impact is of our state legislature and the governor's decisions on our behalf. So you've helped us do such a good job by preparing for what the future brings, so we're not reacting, we're anticipating. Makes a big difference to our community, so thank you. All righty. We need to establish some dates for our library trustee interview. Mr. Tuttle, you and I have to come up with that date, and we need for our board work session to work on facilities. Maybe it was our one. The strategic plan, of course, is another significant one. And boardsmanship, are we also?
Yes, I've been playing voicemail tag with the Ohio School Boards Association, Rob Delaney, but I'm working on that also.
Excellent. So if we take a look and see, are we anticipating, then, three work sessions in addition to the library trustee consideration?
Yes, the library trustee, if you recall, our process is two board members, one trustee, superintend myself as non-voting members, and one other person from the library, so that'd be, while we don't call it a committee, in a sense, a committee activity when the form.
Sounds good. Okey-dokey. So let's see if we can find our five-way agreements first.
I just had a question. We're looking at something on boardsmanship with OSBA.
And?
Would that be better?
After the first of the year?
After the first of the year with new board members? I mean?
What do you think, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, we could plan that. I have been in some districts where, after the election's been certified in November, in this case, we know there'll be one new board member that we even try to schedule something before the first year, but after the general election and things are finalized. So we could certainly do some advance work on that, and then I think, Bill, you and Mary may remember, we did this once years ago.
Yes.
When Rob Delaney came up and just kind of a general session, so, yeah, we could put that off.
I mean, just a suggestion, it's all your call.
Strategic plan and the facilities discussion are, we want to try to do our very best to.
Absolutely.
Get those completed before school begins so that it's easier for you to.
I would say the facilities one takes precedent over the strategic plan.
Yeah, mhm.
Okay, so facilities, and we're looking at a weeknight?
All right, are we wanting next week?
You're going to be out of town?
I'm leaving next week. It's gonna almost have to go, I'm gonna be gone, but.
This Thursday that we didn't do the library, was that because the library folks?
The problem was on the library, incorrect.
Okay, what about the 13th, this day after tomorrow? Is that a day that?
That's the start of our state chiefs conference. I'll be in Columbus until Monday.
That's a no-go for me.
No-go for you. Okay. What about Monday, the 17th?
I have city council.
City council?
I'm good.
17th's good for me.
Tuesday, the 18th?
18 is good. I'm good across all those days.
18th is good.
18th is good?
Mhm.
All right.
Everybody go down the 18th?
Okay, let's do 7-18. I'll make my change.
Do you want a dinner-work session as we did tonight, 5:30?
Because it's a more substantial topic, and that gives us a chance to. Do you have your stuff ready for the facilities discussion?
I could do, I mean, I think we need to start it.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't need the data besides what we already have.
Yeah, Bill and I, I know Matt left some files, and I'll share what Bill all the backup from.
Okay.
The previous meetings.
Tim O'Keefe did some of the preliminary.
Yes.
Okay, so if we do that on Tuesday, the 18th, is 5:30 okay for everybody?
Yeah, that should be good.
Okey-dokey.
Are we going to be here?
Wherever you want to do it.
Your choice, Bill.
If this is available, this is a good spot.
Okay.
In the room next.
Yeah.
Although that'll all be in public session, that, okay.
So here unless we hear otherwise, then?
We're here unless we hear otherwise. I'll check on that in the morning to see if the facility's available.
It's a work session, not executive session.
Okay, correct.
Special board work session, and we're going to do 5:30, includes dinner, we'll be here at Paradigm. All right? Okay. All righty, so that's one. That's excellent. And?
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan. What are we thinking?
Bill, what kind of timeframe do you want for that?
That could be, I think, July or August. July, I'm running out of dates because I'm gone the last week in July.
All right. Sally, do you know when you'll be back?
The 31st of July.
So what about the beginning of August?
First week in August.
If we looked at Monday. If we looked at Monday the 7th, or, I don't know, August 1st, 2nd, Tuesday, August 2nd, I'm sorry.
1st.
Wednesday, August 2nd. I know I can't, well, I might be able to.
You know what, I have, well, I guess I can switch my
So the first week of August, being the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, are any of those dates good for folks? 1st, 2nd, and 3rd of August.
2nd or 3rd.
2nd or 3rd?
The 3rd's better for me.
What if we did August 3rd? That's a Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
Would that work for everybody?
I'm good.
So August 3rd?
Ginny, the only thing is, and I'm going to tell you, and we can go ahead and plan it, but that's the week my brother's coming to town to help me at my mom's, so I don't really know. I assume an evening, meaning we're going to be done by the evening. So I'm going to say yes, but if something comes up, I'll let you know.
Okay.
It'll be done by the evening?
Yeah.
You might be exhausted.
Exhaust is what I mean. You're welcome, I'm done. We're going to be done.
Do you want to make it?
You will be done.
Would you feel better if we made it 6 o'clock?
No, whatever's easiest for the rest of you.
All right, so let's make that 5:30. Let's see, 5:30 on Thursday, August 3rd, for strategic plan.
We're at Thursday, August 3rd?
Yes, Thursday, I don't know if I said that correctly. At 5:30 here, also at Paradigm.
I'll check on that. I'll check to make sure the space is available that day also.
But we could move elsewhere as we need to.
And the Cardinal Room is a backup plan.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we'll provide dinner that night. That will also be in public session.
Yeah, so that sounds good. Let's see. The library, then, Tom, it's up for you and me especially. I don't, you know, Mary and Bill and Sally aren't needed to do that one, so. Are you available, Tom, that last week of July? Like, I think, don't they have a deadline? They have a deadline on the trustee, don't they?
Well, it's July 22nd for us to appoint without concurrence from the probate court. I'm calling the judge tomorrow to ask for support that because of summer schedule conflicts, that if we go past July 22nd, would they simply confirm our recommended candidate? I'm hopeful we can work that out, but I need to make the call.
Would you be available, Tom, on the 19th, 20th, or 21st?
Yep.
Oh, so maybe we can do that. So 19, 20, or 21st, if you could check with that, because you have
I'm involved too, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
The 21st is out, I'm in, driving down to Outer Banks.
Okay. So the 19th or 20th would be our preferred dates, if you could, would that work for you?
20th, we have a pension board meeting during the day, but I should be, I'll make arrangements, make sure I'm back.
Come back.
If we could start at 6 o'clock, that would be better.
Let's, okay, let's do 6, we could even do 6:30. We won't, because we're going
If it's on the, if it's on the 20th, 6:30 would be better. On the 19th, it could be anytime.
Why don't we make it, well, whatever you work out with the other folks. Tim, so would that work for you, Tom?
What time?
So maybe 6:00 or 6:30 on
The 20th?
Either the 19th or 20th. We're going to see what the library folks, because
I'm good either day.
Okay.
Okay, excellent. We'll get to work on that tomorrow, and then
Okay.
that would
Would you want the same, also use Paradigm or the Cardinal Room as a backup?
Cardinal Room. I'd rather use the Cardinal Room.
Cardinal Room for this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a library trustee interview. Okay, well, that, we solved it. I was worried that we were going to have
Okay, so the 17th is a work session on facilities?
18th.
18th.
18th?
So July 18th for facilities at 5:30. Strategic plan on August 3rd, 5:30. Both of those will be at Paradigm unless the facility's not available. And then Cardinal Room on either the 19th or 20th, once Dan confers with the folks from the library, to see when Kurt Helfrich and Cheryl, well, it's really Kurt Helfrich
Yeah.
is the only one who has to be there, and then the candidates.
Yes.
So, so if you could just let us know by email once you confirm with Kurt.
We will start first thing in the morning, and then also confirm. We have four people that expressed an interest, and I think they understood the interviews would happen in the office.
Okay. And Mrs. Locke will be very grateful.
Yes, yes.
She's been working hard to try to find
Yes, she has.
A time so much easier when we're all here, and we can look at our
Got it, and
Okay. So we all need a motion?
So moved.
To adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. So moved.
I got Bill and Mary here.
And if you would call the roll, please, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Shaw? Yes. Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.